It's 5:00. Everybody please stand. We're going to have a brief indication following the indication on last county manager's lead and pleasant lead. So let us pray. Heavenly Father, dear Lord God, we love you. We do thank you for this day and this time to be in this courthouse tonight, Lord, to do the work of this year on county, Lord. I thank you for each and every commissioner gathered around these tables. Lord, I ask you to lead and guide and direct us in decisions we make, Lord. I thank you for the public that's here tonight, Lord. You set special blessing upon each and every one of them. Be with our staff. And what we do, as we all know, Lord, is his election day, God, both nationally, statewide and locally. Lord, we just ask, hope and pray that those elected today, God, will just look to you for guidance as they lead our country, our state and our county, Lord. We just ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll call a meeting of the board. First thing on the agenda is roll call. I see all the commissioners are present. Next thing is the agenda. Um, approving our agenda, everybody should have a printed agenda before them. Some might offer a motion on our agenda.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McClellan. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Commissioner Harrell. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is approved. We have one set of minutes, October 6th, regular meeting. Hopefully everyone's had an opportunity to review those minutes. They're over in our packet. Uh, someone might offer a motion on the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the October 6th regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McClellan. Is there a second?
There is.
Second by Commissioner Harrell. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, visitor presentation is Ms. Alberta Mayberry, Darien, Georgia, transport and senior citizen. Is Ms. Mayberry here?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Mayberry.
I can stand right here?
Yes, ma'am, you can. If you want.
Well, good evening, members of the board. Thank you for having me to come and speak. This is my third time that I have tried to come to be on our agenda, but I've been rejected. But I'm glad that I'm here this evening, and I would like to speak about the presentation that you've had in this community now for about thirteen, fourteen years. And many of the people do not know anything about it. And I think that's kind of bad, because it's a service that's needed. It's very needed, and I know that I need it, because I'm a non-father, and there are other people in this community who needs that service as well. And we will promise that when we got the service, that we could use it, that we could go to the nine counties that will see our service, but it has never worked for McIntosh County. At the present time, we only have one bus, and that one bus is to service the whole of McIntosh County. And we have people that depend on it, like the people that's on dialysis, the people who kept off the support list, and that kind of thing. And we're not getting the service. And I have spoken about this before, and nothing has been done. So I'm hoping and praying that this year, that we could get something done. Now, we, um, the one bus that we have, if you called them, you have to call the day in advance and make your appointments. But there are times, if I have a nine o'clock appointment to be in Brunswick, they have, I have to be picked up at seven o'clock in the morning. And then I have to ride all over to Sterling and all those places, and then to pick up people in Sterling and seniors in Brunswick and drop them off before I can get to my appointment. And that is not, when we got that service, it took us six years, six long years together. And that was not one of the things that we were supposed to be, you know, getting. Now, I have spoken to Commissioner Lotzner. I have spoken to Mr. Popple, and I've spoken to Mr. Jordan, and nothing has been done. And like I said, I'm hoping and praying now that something could be done. And at this time, the fare has been increased. It used to be three dollars for each county that we went into. Now there's five dollars. So a round trip for me to go to Brunswick is costing me twenty dollars. We have patients here that's on dialysis, that have dialysis three and four times a week. So then we figure out what they're going to have to be spending, and we are on fixed income in this community. So I would like you all to take some of these things into consideration and try to at least lower the fares back to three dollars instead of the five dollars.
Okay. Um, I spoke several years ago when you come in here and complained, I spoke with the director of the CRC. We don't set the fares at the county level. The CRC sets those fares. And back then, it was a staffing issue. They had buses, they didn't have drivers. And this is the first I've heard of it, not these other commissioners very well may have. But I'll be glad to reach out to him again and see where they're at on drivers and buses and where they, and where they are on the fare. But this is the first I've heard about the increased fare as well. So, um, but I'd be glad to reach out to the director, and I'm sure the manager can as well, and Commissioner Lotzner may have himself already. But we can, we'll address it and try to get some answers for sure.
Well, I'm hoping and praying that you will, you know. And like I said, it's a needed service in this community.
Okay.
And I don't know if you guys know, like I said, it took us six years together, and it was not easy. And we as seniors, we are the ones that's up in Atlanta, and our senior week in February, and it's very cold up there. And like I said, it's hard, especially for me, because I have a lot of on the line conditions and arthritis and heart disease, and to be up there in February fighting to get these services here, and then the people in the community, they don't even know anything about it. Half of the people that I'm telling, they don't even know CRC. What is that? Never heard of it. And that is the agency that provides the services for seniors in this community. And I really feel that the seniors should know about it. And now I know that you have people on the board of directors. We never hear from them. You have people on the aging. They don't come back, and we don't hear anything from them to let us know anything that's going on or, you know, what's offered to us.
Okay. I, I don't have an answer for that. I don't sit on any of those boards, so I can't answer that part of it. Do you, have you, do you attend their meetings? Have you voiced your concerns at those meetings? Because they have me.
At the aging, yes, I do. I do.
Have any of you voiced your concern there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I voiced my concern.
But no feedback?
No feedback.
Okay.
And like I said, I spoke to Commissioner Jordan. No feedback. I've spoken with city manager here. No feedback. I've spoken with attorney, and no feedback.
Well, I'll give you.
And it's the same thing with the senior center. We would like to have a senior center, and there's only about twenty-five or thirty people out there, and the seniors in this community, we make up twenty-five percent of the total population here of McIntosh County. And I feel that we should have a center that's going to accommodate the rest of the people who are interested in going up there. And I've been complaining for this about maybe twenty-plus years now.
Do you?
Yes, yes.
No.
Because I was, I served on the board for at least sixteen years.
I served on this board for seventeen, and you haven't complained about the size of that center. Now, we've remodeled it, we've added furniture, we've made improvements to it, but I've never heard you complain about the size of it and whether it'll accommodate.
Yes, I have.
Okay. Well, I will do my best to get you some answers from the CRC on transportation and that number, okay?
And I hope that you can get something, because we have plenty of people here in this community. We have a lot of talented people, and we would like to have a center that we can go to and, you know, exercise our, um, our talents. And we need it, because it helps us. It keeps the brain working, you know? And we're not getting any younger, we're getting older, and we need a center, a state yard, to accommodate, you know, like, um, most of the people in this community. And I'm sure that most of them would know the same thing that I'm speaking about now.
All right. Anything else?
I think that's about it, and I'm hoping that you're going to be, you know, listening and that we're going to get some action.
We're definitely listening, and we'll get some answers on the transportation.
Okay. And another thing is, like I said, we've had people that was on dialysis, that they would left at the center, because when Jeanne Rod came to pick up that patient, she was not ready. So they left that patient there, and she had to find a means to get back home, and that was a wheelchair patient.
Okay.
So these are critical things that you all have to think about. And I thank you for hearing me, and I'm hoping and praying that, you know, I don't have to come back again. Like I said, it's been twenty-plus years, so now I think it's time that we get a little something done, okay?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
We are your number one people in this community, and it's the shoulders that you are standing on, that you stood on, and you're still standing. So please don't forget us. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, next visitor presentation, Mr. Griffin Lotzner, Darien City Council with a special presentation. Mr. Lotzner?
Yes, sir. We appreciate it.
I'd like to address Ms. Mayberry. Ms. Mayberry, as the chairperson indicated, we will talk to CRC. I don't want to, I want to make sure that you fully understand the process and, and county manager correct me if I'm, if I say incorrectly. While we will talk to CRC, at the end of the day, CRC works as an independent organization, and they have their own set of rules. And I know with the transportation, I know there are a number of different factors that impact some of the things that you want. We will talk with them about those factors, and I would encourage you to talk with CRC as well, and I know you have in the past, so we will look into it. I will be having a meeting at the Senior Citizen. I met with them a couple of weeks ago, and I'll be having another community meeting with them in a couple of weeks, not just with them, but at the Senior Citizen. So I encourage you to come there as well, or have others that have concerns. That'd be another opportunity to express your concerns at that, and I'll talk more about that later, but.
Will you give me the date when you're going to?
Yes, I'm, at the end, I'm, in case you leave, let me go ahead and tell you now. It is next Wednesday. Let me get the date for you.
Sixteenth.
The sixteenth, at 5:00 P.M.
Next Wednesday at 5:00?
Yeah, let me, let me verify before I tell you something wrong.
That's correct.
Okay, the sixteenth at 5:00 P.M.
At the center.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, great. All right, Councilor Lotzner?
Yeah, thank you for this opportunity to be here, and thank you, Mr. Mayberry, because I want the chairman to know, I'm a senior citizen now too, so look out for me. On a very serious note, it has touched our hearts, and they'll have a presentation to a gentleman that's here, so I'll cut through the chase and ask him to come forward. He's not in any trouble that I know of at this time, but he served as the attorney for McIntosh County, Adam Popple. We're going to ask you to come up this time. He's looking strange. So it's been a whole lot of secrets going on amongst some of the leaders in here. We want to present you with something. Let's just go ahead and unveil that now. Uh, there was a gentleman that he made, uh, McIntosh County is so famous. This gentleman stands about six foot two, and believe it or not, of some of the rich history of the Butler Island plantation, I asked our city council member to be with us on the day. Mayor Protem Skene, he gladly came to help out, and I'm going to ask him to stand there too, because Bayroux towers above somebody like me. I'm only five feet four. He's six foot two, so he's almost one foot taller than I am. What you may not know is that it was Attorney Adam Popple that, on his own time and energy, brought some great history that was here, but it was hidden. Most people don't know that Bayroux walked the streets of Darien. Most people don't even know that. Most people don't know that he lived over on the Butler Island plantation in the Houston House there. And there was a special stamp that was made of 1993, of the waterfowl conservation stamp. And this stamp depicts the Butler Island house, the chimney and the ducks. I had no idea that Bayroux was an avid duck hunter. I did not know that. But now a lot of history is being unveiled, and I'll say to you, uh, I was in a very special program, Kathleen know a little bit about it, out of London, England. They came, let's make sure, bring Bayroux over a little bit if he don't mind. If you want, this is a little, thank you. I have your stamp right there. And I made sure, because after we found out about the history, it was a wild moment for me. I'm like, wow! And we dug deeper into it, but this is the gentleman quietly had all of this history, and now it is known, not all around the world yet, but it will be, because we have some individuals from London, England that was here for two days, they was here. And I made sure, and they heard about the history, and they were asking me a whole lot of questions about Bayroux. So I pretended like I knew this for forty years, you know? Uh, but I, I made sure when we talked that I received a lot of my information from Attorney Adam Popple. So in about six to eight months, you might see yourself on Discovery Channel and hear your name called. But if you can just give this audience, as I sit down, we thank you for helping Darien, McIntosh County, and now the world of this American history that very few of us locally know anything about. So tell us how in the world you got involved in this, and I passed it out to some of the leaders here, and that light that's on in the Butler house. Let's give, just say Adam Popple a hand. Give him a hand.
Yeah. Guys, my, and, and I want to stress, uh, these are just things that I've been told throughout, throughout my life, but my aunt worked on Butler Island. She worked in the ice cream parlor at Chaney, and she had stories to tell that were just incredible. And through the years, she, she handed them down to me, and I hope I can hand them down as well. She married a guy by the name of Joe Fleming. His brother Clark Fleming was the manager at the Butler Island Dairy, and they were, they were from North Carolina, and he died in a tragic accident before World War II. But, but it's just, it, our history is so rich. Colonel Houston was an incredible man. He did things that, that we can't even imagine. He, uh, he was indeed in the, um, the military, the United States military, and he did so many other things as well. But one of the incredible things that he did for McIntosh County was he exposed McIntosh County to the world through people like Bayroux. And, and Reverend Lotzner, I got to tell you, I'm appreciative for you, because you don't ever quit. You know, you, you've hit so, you've hit, you've hit so many points just today on things that matter, and thank you for, for shining the light on this incredible history that we have. Bayroux and many other baseball players were, were involved tremendously in the Butler Island facility and the Brunswick, the North Glen County facilities as well. So, so know that, know that we have a history, that, that things are important. We may seem a little quiet, but, uh, but McIntosh County matters historically, and it's going to matter in the future thanks to people like you, Reverend Lotzner.
No, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
I always try to be a little comical, so I have to do that. Uh, I have one of those commemorative stamps. I had to go on eBay. It's expensive. But Attorney Popple told me he was going to buy me a stamp, and I never got that stamp. I went on eBay and bought the stamp myself. But thank you, and I really do appreciate you and the history for tourism and just history itself. This is going to resonate throughout America, and I guarantee you, ninety-nine percent of McIntosh County had no idea those caliber of people walked our streets. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Lotzner. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Lotzner, and Mayor Protem Skene. Appreciate you being here. Join us anytime.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Before the attorney's just now, I would like to thank him. I entered the heartbreakous broad contest for cancer awareness that they have every year at Southeastern Hospital, and I want to thank Mr. Popple for a donation of five hundred dollars. And I thought that was a wonderful thing, and so he's being honored to let them know that he gives a Johnny the Sun.
I tried to get my stamp paid.
All right. Next up for visitor presentations, we have Kat Boyd, executive director of McIntosh County Chamber of Commerce, to talk about a Christmas event. Kat?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Now, I know my presentation is so joyful, which is the focus of the Christmas event. However, I happen to have prepared this evening, today, your personal invitation to our chamber auction. There are some tickets here to thank you all for your support of the chamber. We greatly appreciate everything that you do for us, so we hope that you will attend. We have some amazing items that will be available, so it should be a really great evening out at the Sapporo Hymn Golf Course. Our primary focus is the joyful and Darien Christmas celebration that we have coming up on December fourth. It will be the traditional celebration with delighted Christmas tree. We are partnering with the Grand Exchapel Church. Their list of events is on the second page there. So they will kick off our evening at 4:30. Parade will start at 5:30, followed by pictures with Santa and the lighting of the Christmas tree. I do request some input from the county commissioners. It has been brought to my attention, not only this evening, but prior. Last year, the Christmas tree was moved to next to the art center, because that is where the Santa pictures happen, and it is where the parade ends. However, we have had some concerns from the downtown businesses that it kind of excludes them from the festivities, because it was previously in the empty lot that's there on the corner of Seventeen and Broad Streets. So I asked the commissioners if they've had any insight or recommendation for the placement of the tree. It is again donated by Webster Street Farm, so we are supporting them and showcasing their trees, but I need guidance on where we think it should go.
Like right now?
And you can send it to me, but if anybody's heard any complaints or questions, I know that it had been moved last year, so I've heard some inputs both ways. As a pro, that it meant that families didn't cross Seventeen at night, because they were going to Santa, but it meant that the downtown businesses didn't receive the benefit of Christmas festivities quite as much. So if you have any recommendations, please feel free to share them with me. We will take that under consideration when we plan out the placement of the tree.
I didn't realize it was still the Grant's Christmas Church, the Grant's Chapel.
They do a tree there, and then the chamber does one that is typically on Seventeen itself. Um, this is also, you know, I'm still learning the history of where things go.
There's one commissioner I'm, I'm not opposed to going downtown on that corner lot, so that's me.
Um, you know, I know, uh, we've had some really great support from Kate with her help of decorating the tree in the past, and, um, you know, I just want to make sure that we put it in a place that can be enjoyed by the most of our community. The recreational department will do, will also be doing their luminaries through Barton Square, so we want to make sure that everything can be enjoyed safely by our county members. Um, the last there is an add-on that I have found out this past week. We are invited to partner with the Brunswick Chamber of Commerce and the Camden County Chamber of Commerce for the Legislative Breakfast, Grits and Issues, held in the Jekyll Island Convention Center. We are a full partner in this this year and have been invited to participate, not only in adding items to the legislative agenda, as well as questions to the panel of legislative representatives. I will be acting as moderator for the question and answer series. I know several people will be meeting next week to talk about input, but you are also all invited to attend on December ninth. I know several entities are purchasing tables, so.
Anybody have any question or comments from this board? Here none, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that is, there are no public hearings, so we'll move right into old business. We have one item under our old business. It's a considered employment contract with the chief appraiser. It's an action item. I am going to ask this commission, if it pleases commission and Mr. Payne as well. Mr. Payne had a new contract prepared, forwarded to the commissioners this morning, about ten minutes after ten, failed to send that to the manager and the attorney. Manager and all the attorneys had some time to review it, so I'm going to ask this board to consider postponing this one more time, so they can have time to review the contract and, um, and put this back on the agenda for our next meeting. If that pleases board, or if board members have any comments, but if not, I'd ask for a motion to that effect.
I make, I make the motion as we postpone, with, with the caveat that if we approve it, that all pay will be retroactive.
Have a motion to postpone with, if it were to be approved, retro pay. Is there a second?
I think it is.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, new business, first item, consider reappointment to the Idaho Hilton Board of Trustees. This is an action item. Uh, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. We currently have three openings on the library board. I did confirm that with the, uh, the new manager of the library today. Their bylaws state that we have three, the school board has two, and the city has two. So we have three openings on that board. There are currently four applicants in your packet, and these will be three-year terms on this board, set to expire on December 31st, 2025.
Okay, so as the manager said, three openings, four applicants?
Yes, sir.
So we will open the floor. I don't fear we do them one by one, but we'll be three. What do you think the board, so the floor is open for a motion?
Do any of the ones that are in front of us live in the city of Darien?
Oh, I know that two of them do.
I know. It's kind of hard for me to tell when they have Darien, if there's only two applicants in the county.
Right.
Where's, I see three.
Black Island, San Antonio.
It's in the back.
Blue Bear in San Antonio.
Two of them are in the county, two of them in the city.
Do the city have any that's, that's up for?
I'm not sure.
I'll make a motion that we accept the nomination of Harriet Lang to Dolores Sable and Susan Murphy to be appointed to the Idaho Hilton Library Board.
All right, have a motion by Commissioner McClellan for Harriet Lang to Dolores Sable and Susan Murphy. Is there a second?
That's a motion to a county, yes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Motion to appoint?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, are any of these reappointments?
No.
The ones that were on a little longer?
They didn't turn in anybody, because there was that.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, the next item, number two.
How do we notify? I mean, this.
Sure, the particular clerk wrote some letter.
For those who did and did.
That's right.
Usually we only have the filled spots we have, so I didn't have. We, okay.
Number two on the new business, consider resolution 2022-22, supporting state appropriation, supplementing county support for Sapporo Island. This is an action item. There was a brief discussion on this last night, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. This resolution requests $250,000 in state funding each year over the next three years to reimburse the county for expenses pertaining to the federal lawsuit that we just settled a few months ago with Sapporo Island residents, and it also would replace any lost revenue dealing with property tax increases as part of that settlement. The resolution also authorized, can't authorize the county clerk to send this resolution to our state representative Buddy Deloche and our senator like Mike Hodges, as long, as well as the rest of the state leadership.
Okay. So I have a motion on resolution 2022.
I recommend, recommend approval of the resolution 2022, supporting state appropriation, supplementing county support for Sapporo Island.
Have a motion by Commissioner Lotzner to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McClellan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, number three, consider releasing the John Deere 770G. [inaudible 00:08:59]. Number two on the new business, consider resolution 2022-22, supporting state appropriation supplementing county support for Sapporo Island. This is an action item. There was a brief discussion on this last night, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. This resolution requests $250,000 in state funding each year over the next three years to reimburse the county for expenses pertaining to the federal lawsuit that we just settled a few months ago with Sapporo Island residents. And it also would replace any lost revenue dealing with property tax increases as part of that settlement. The resolution also authorized, authorized the county clerk to send this resolution to our state representative Buddy Deluch and our senator like Mike Hodges, as well as the rest of the state leadership.
Okay. Someone call for a motion on resolution 2022?
I recommend approval of the resolution 2022, supporting state appropriation supplementing county support for Sapporo Island.
Have a motion by Commissioner Lotson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McClellan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, number three, consider leasing the John Deere 770G motor grader with a rolling GS20 sloper from Flint Equipment Company for 60 months with annual payments of $57,214.14 and authorize the county manager to execute the lease agreement. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. We received two bids on motor graders, one being a John Deere 770G and a CAT 140. The low bid on the lease buyback program and the recommendation of road supercontinent being the John Deere 770G with the rolling GS20 sloper in the amount of $57,214.14 annually from Flint Equipment Company. Funds for this lease will come out of the 22 swaps. At the end of those five years, we'll turn that piece of equipment in and start a new buyback program. That way, we will stay in new equipment every five years, lowering our maintenance and repairs costs. The equipment should be available this summer coming.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the manager on this?
Does the lease include maintenance?
It does not include maintenance, but it does have the extended warranty with it.
How long?
Five years, $5,000. Five years, $5,000.
Can you tell me the age of the others, the other motor graders?
I think you got a '01 model and a '01 and '10 model.
An '01 model and a '01 and '10 model.
Okay. And it still work? Not much longer.
All right. Someone call for a motion on leasing the John Deere motor grader?
I make a motion that we approve the lease with Flint Equipment Company.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McClellan. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Harold. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, number four, consider intergovernmental agreement with the McIntosh County Industrial Development Authority and the city of Darien for a traffic study at exit 49. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. This is an IGA between McIntosh County, the IDA, and the city of Darien to share the cost of a traffic study at exit 49 to be performed by Kimberly Horn and Associates. The total cost of the study is $41,290,000, bringing in our third of the cost at $14,633.14. The study will encompass both sides of the interstate to include the Old Allen Mall side and the city side. One reason for this traffic study is to try to figure out a way to get traffic into the travel center that was recently approved and rezoned by the city of Darien several months ago. Not to mention, Darien has sparked a lot of interest lately with the announcement of Hyundai coming into Bryan County, and we need to know what that exit may hold for us and plan for the future.
Anybody have any questions for the manager on this? Okay, someone call for a motion on this IGA?
I make a motion that we enter into an IGA for a traffic study at exit 49.
Motion to enter into the agreement by Commissioner Carlacki. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lotson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, number five, under new business, consider application for rezoning 21.898 acres by Bullock Two Bluff Investments LLC located on the corner of Sheldon Bluff Road and Pine Harbor Road and US Highway 17, further referred to as map and parcel number 004600307001. The current zoning classification is AF, agricultural forestry, and proposed zoning is CG, general commercial. This is an action item. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. The applicant would like to open up a boat storage facility at this parcel. The rezon has gone through all the legal proceedings with no opposition. However, the zoning board did not provide us a recommendation. There was a mix-up with the applicant and the zoning board on the date and time of the meeting. But according to our ordinance and everything, it does look like this fits that zoning classification.
I know the applicant's here tonight. The applicant was here last night for our workshop. He presented us with a set of plans and set drawings and answered some questions. Is there any further questions tonight before we call for a motion?
Explain that again, what you just said about the meeting.
The applicant didn't show up for the public hearing where the zoning board could ask any questions, so they didn't make the recommendation. But it does fit the classification of our ordinance for this zoning.
And they did open the floor for people for or against.
Right.
Well, someone call for a motion on the rezoning of 21.89 acres by Bullock Two Bluff Investments?
I make a motion that we rezon the property at parcel 00460037001 from AF to the proposed CG.
Motion to approve the rezon by Commissioner Carlacki. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harold. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, number six, under new business, consider application for rezoning 27.5 acres by Sherwood Mills located on Swamp Road, further referred to as map and parcel number 00630012002. The current zoning classification is AF, agricultural forestry. The proposed zoning is AR, agricultural residential. This is an action item as well, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. The applicant would like to develop a residential subdivision on this piece of property, and the application says he would like to have four residential lots. It has gone through all the legal proceedings with no opposition, and it did receive a unanimous vote of the zoning board for approval.
Okay. Any questions from the commission to staff at this time? All right, here, now, someone call for a motion?
Make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I read this, but it says to build homes for family at first, like, as a subdivision? That's all.
Once he gets the rezoning, he'll still have to go through our subdivision works to get subdivision approved by the zoning board also.
Okay. Proceed.
Make a motion that we approve the application for rezoning of those 27.5 acres by Sherwood Mills.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lotson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carlacki. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, number seven, under new business, consider application for rezoning one acre by Catherine Russell, agent from Maxine James located at 14641 US Highway 17, further referred to as map and parcel number 0049A0003001. The current zoning classification is CN, neighborhood commercial. The proposed zoning is CG, general commercial. Manager will please speak on this one.
Yes, sir. This is the old Yalonia Equipment Building right next to the Mega Lounge on Highway 17 in Yalonia. The rezon has gone through all the legal proceedings with no opposition and a unanimous vote of approval by the zoning board. The desire of the business to go on that parcel is a tire repair shop.
Okay. Any questions for staff on this one? All right, here, now, someone call for a motion on rezoning this one acre.
Make that motion that we rezon the one acre for the stated purpose.
All right, motion to approve for the stated purpose by Commissioner Lotson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harold. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, last item under new business, consider amendment to schedule D2 of the Administrative Services Agreement for the McIntosh County Retirement Plan through ACCG Retirement Services. This is an action item. I know you went into a good bit of detail on this last night.
Yes, sir. This amendment is to the McIntosh County Defined Contrition Retirement Plan that ACCG Retirement Service handles for the county. All the amendment does is allow the ACCG Board of Trustees on the retirement board to invest the county's funds in an additional investment group, and those are listed as Tier Three in the D2 schedule.
And it stated last night that staff does recommend this change?
Yes, sir.
All right, any questions from the commission at this time? Someone call for a motion on the amendment to schedule D2 of the retirement program?
I make the motion that we approve the amendment to schedule D2 of the Administrative Services Agreement.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lotson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That's everything under new business, and we'll move right into commissioner reports. Commissioner Carlacki?
No report.
Commissioner Lotson?
Yes, I will have a town hall meeting at November 16th at 5:00 PM at the City Citizen Center in Yalonia. All are welcome except the commissioners. Just avoid the violation of the rules of having more than three presidents. One. Also, there was a question that one of my constituents had asked, and that, do we know how much longer before that tax settlement, the one that dealt with the overtaxation due to mistake?
I'll let the attorney speak on that in his report if he doesn't. You want to wait till your report?
Sure. I'll play the dressing gown. There's no point in delay, especially while we're talking about it. But I think what you'll find in the information that's been sent out to the taxpayers so far is that the county has literally nothing to do with that process. That process is being handled by what's called a special master, a person that's appointed separately by the court, and he is handling it. The notices should have been provided to every taxpayer that would have been entitled to the refund, and they will be in charge of distributing those funds.
And there's also information on our website regarding where they need to go to talk this up.
Absolutely. If you have any other questions, just let me know. Thank you.
That's it.
Commissioner Eric?
No report.
Commissioner McClellan?
I just had a quick question. A couple of people had asked me recently about the sports complex and update on that, and then someone actually asked me this week about anything else being done at Yale.
As far as the sports complex, is this movement, they've started on the concession stands out there. The lights for the baseball fields were going up the last two weeks. I was out there Friday inspecting a few things. They put the conduits in for the wiring for those lights. I haven't received an update on the timeline for being finished yet or engineered. My go-to person right now is on jury duty for two weeks, so I haven't been able to really talk to him. But I have addressed a concern with him. He's gotten Dr. Brown out of Brunswick, who also works with GMC to address those to the contractor, and they're working through those issues.
And what was the progress to completion?
Sometime in January was the contract date, and we have had some rain days, you have to account for those.
And there was some supply chain issues on some drainage pipes in the vehicles.
That's correct. There was a couple of change orders for sewer and a couple of drainage pipes that they had to wait on some materials.
That conclude your report?
And then Yalonia, what else will you have to do?
We are scheduling Yalonia as we speak. The next thing that we're going to complete is the building out there, we're going to take it down, and then also the lights and the baseball fields are going to come down. At that time, we'll be able to redress the fields, the two fields that are on the west side of the park, and get the grass back growing, bases down and all that. And then we are starting to plant this walking path around the perimeter, and also our 2022 swap started in October. We'll receive our first payment for that at the end of this month, and we'll start planting that building on that business.
Thank you.
Okay, that conclude your report? All right, no chairmen's report tonight. Moving to the managing report?
I'll be very brief. We do have several board appointments coming up. We have three boards that I can think of right now, and that is the Recreation Board, that's four terms expiring at the end of this year. Those are advertised to be reappointed at next month's meeting. We have two terms expiring on the Taxation Board that expire at the end of the year. Those are advertised to be reappointed next month. And we also have three terms expiring on the Development Authority Board, and those are being advertised to be appointed at the January meeting. We also have one position available, or one board appointment available for the non-public individual on the CRC Board that we need to find somebody that we have advertised, haven't seen any interest at all. Y'all would make a nomination, and it would go to the city of Darien. They would also approve it, and they would serve for McIntosh County and the city of Darien. If you know of anybody in mind, we need an applicant to spend open session in June.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Are there any, I had asked, I think I called Miss Davis to ask, and she was going to ask, I apologize for not calling up. The Historic Reservation Committee, are there not any?
I've heard rumors that somebody had a line from the county side, but I have not seen a reservation.
Miss Davis?
I haven't heard.
I didn't know if we got one. I know that we had heard there was, in fact, there had been someone present, but we had not received a letter from them.
That conclude your report?
Yes.
Mr. Manager? I was just looking at Commissioner McClellan. Is that conclude your report?
Yes, sir.
All right, county attorneys' report?
Please announce, there's no need for an executive accession and no further report to the attorney.
All right, so nothing left on our printed agenda. The reason we rushed through this thing tonight is there's some people in this room that did not go vote. Please go vote. Shining will be shining.